Start as much fun as the operating budget is and the blueprint is always CIP which really reflects our priorities in a tangible way so we enjoy that.
Exasperated.
Enjoy CIP. I know everybody's excited to review these projects today so this manager.
They are mayor.
Pulling them together.
At council's request, staff has worked tirelessly. I want to thank all of our project managers and our finance team for taking really deep dive. This is a chock full of information and updates both on budgetary side as well as project status so. This is your briefing. If you want to go in a different direction or some specific that you even talk to, we've got put together an outline here for you which will walk you through each of the funds and the CIP associated with those funds. But there's a lot of projects in here. Karen is also going to hand out a handy dandy spreadsheet that has even more information that's not included in this presentation. They'll give you project balances and really kind of a historical financial picture on each one of these projects. So that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen. We have allocated a couple hours for this and we do have a couple of executive session items.
There you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. As the city manager has indicated, we're going to review our capital improvement budget more specifically today. First of all, I wanted to remind you of our overall council priorities and the investments in the city. You have in addition to our PowerPoint, the large spreadsheet. Let me talk about it really quickly first. This has our active priority projects on there. We have more projects. Please note, we have a lot of projects. But included on this handout for the projects, you will see the council priority that is associated with the project listed, the budgeted funding amount through FY23. You'll have the project balance as well. That's through 430. And then we have the proposed FY24 funding amount for CIP. And then finally in the far column, you'll have a status update on each of those projects.
So column four, is that a cumulative multi-year number?
Project to date, yes.
Okay.
You'll notice that projects are numbered on the far left. That will assist us if we have to go look at one in the middle of our discussion today. So I'll provide that to you. The spreadsheet will show all of the budgeted funding. So this presentation we're going to go through will be funded by fund basis. So you'll notice affordable housing, for example, on the general fund spreadsheet, it's going to say one thing on that. It's going to have all of the funding for that. That's just an example. So we're now to here, our overview of our priority investments. You see significant investments if you look at your colored graph page that will show investments in parks, infrastructure, mobility, affordable housing, neighborhoods, and economic development. Okay, we're going to start with our general fund, which I mentioned just a minute ago. Affordable housing has 9.5 million, whereas the spreadsheet is showing 14.5 million. So we're just looking at our general fund here. You'll see that we have the projects listed, we have our funding to date, which is going to correspond mostly with your spreadsheet, and then what we've planned and what we gave in FY23, FY24 proposed budget, and then a quick summary update for those projects.
And to be, to clarify, that FY23 on affordable housing, Karen, does not show the amount we moved from the parking fund as part of the county square agreement.
Not on this one because it is.
I mean, the city's contribution to affordable housing was significantly more than 2 million in '23.
Okay, so we're going to start with that affordable housing amount. All of that has been moved to the greenfield housing fund. So everything has been spent to date for that project update for the top line. Our next project is the Academy Downtown Bypass. It reflects funding of 250,000 to date. That was received in the current year. We have 500,000 programmed for next year for '24 to complete the project. Improvements are underway on several streets. They're enlisted. And our current project balance is around 11,000 and that's after our purchase order has been set up. The next project is Augusta Street Improvements. Total funding to date. The next project is Augusta Street Improvements. Total funding to date is six hundred and fifty thousand, all of which came in our current year. An additional one million will be added to next year's budget. And we have a contractor with preliminary survey and traffic data is being collected.
And from where to where does that complete?
Where to where?
The Augusta Street Improvement, what, I mean, what?
Where does the?
What does that entail?
That is the Augusta Street Safety Improvement Project from Church Street to Balden Road.
And is that included construction as well?
Right now, that is getting us to design for Streetscape, more traffic analysis and commercial section, engineering design.
And something.
I'm sorry, Ken, there's, we are looking at utility on there.
But not from the general fund. Something that, to me, is notable, and this is the first place it triggers. And I know when we do budgeting, five-year forecast is not anything codified, for lack of a better term. But for example, last year when we sat around this table or approved the budget, the plan for Augusta Street improvements for FY twenty four at that time was two million. So it's cut down by half from what was planned this time last year, and the reason is allocating it other places. Right?
Where did the, this is the first I've heard of undergrounding. Where did that, where did the, why did Augusta Street get the priority for undergrounding?
This is the section, we did this two years ago, engineered it. This is the section where we moved the poles the other side of the street, about Peach, where Peach Restaurant used to be.
Hundred block out.
A couple of years ago. And this is a section in front of Duncan's. So we did one side of the street. This is a section in front of Duncan's. And it's, these are the poles that are actually practically in the road. It's a two-block section, and we had major redevelopment along there too. So we did it along with redevelopment.
So this is when Fifth Third Bank came.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the other bank, Chase.
Chase.
Those banks. Since I've been on council.
This is, this is the first time I've heard of it. But anyway, I've got telegraph walls that are on Stone Avenue. You've gotten, picked a channel of getting hit as well. So first I've heard of three point five million dollars going to Augusta Road, Augusta Street.
Wheels aren't here to talk about what we did walking tours other than.
So maybe we can touch on that when we get to the undergrounding funds. Okay, it'll be later in the presentation.
Our downtown facade improvements show almost five hundred and twenty-six thousand received, including our two hundred and fifty thousand in FY twenty three. We have a budget of a hundred and twenty-five thousand programmed for twenty-four with a focus on just closing up some of our existing projects that we've been working towards. Our current balance in that project account overall is about two hundred and seventy-one thousand. Number twenty, the next one is our Economic Development Fund, and that has twenty-eight million that has come in. This is your TIF surplus funds. Since twenty sixteen, a very large amount. But you'll notice we're planning, we have put in one point five million this year, and we're going to move one million next year. We have an estimate available of four point six million, and that was highlighted on this table in our last budget work session where we had some redevelopment projects, a master plan, downtown transportation plan, and some other anticipated projects taking it down to that four point six million available for next year.
So wait, just so I'm clear on this. So you have four point six million available, but we're only allocating one million at this point?
Next year, we are budgeting in another one million. Okay? Once we have, once we have done that, plus our other commitments that we've made for other projects, we'll have a balance of four point six. That means we've spent every year we've been chunking all this money for ED projects.
And what TIF is?
That twenty million goes way back to twenty sixteen.
What TIF is this from?
CBD and West End.
Okay, but not by the way.
I guess what's throwing me off is the FY twenty four specification. I mean, it's not just for FY twenty four, it's for any projects that we.
Exactly, exactly.
All right.
Yeah. I just wanted you to know that that would be after the other items we had already programmed.
So the seven point four million is the project balances, which is what we have from previous year or?
That's what you've got left over.
Left, okay.
But we have the Army Navy redevelopment that's coming out of that, downtown transportation master plan that's coming out of that. We have some anticipated projects.
So that's, that's at four point six, okay. All right.
Those are taking.
I'm trying to figure how you got this. Now I know.
Yes, ma'am. Our ED initiatives project, we have funded two point seven million, and this is for three different ED projects. We want them together. They'll try to save some space. We have the ED initiatives, the ED marketing, and the office strategy, vacancy strategy projects. So the total for all three over the life of them is two point seven. We added eight hundred and fifty thousand this year and planned seven hundred and fifty thousand for next year. Our current balance in that project, all of those, is three hundred and forty-six thousand. Next, we have our fire station improvements project. It shows funding to date of one point nine million with one point two received in our current year. And we are projecting a budget amount of one million for next year. And these are projects related to fire station. Past project was to put a replacement on a, on a station. That's the type of things we're funded out of this.
And that one too is down from what we predicted this time last year, Karen. And isn't that, it's been my impression that prior sometime in the past, a millage increase was, was made to go towards fire station improvements. So to me, that number is kind of non-negotiable, is it not?
However, part of that was for salaries, is that not, Mr.? And so that's been in the general fund and not in the CIP.
Karen, does that include renovating the West End Fire Station?
New station.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is at some point in the past, a millage increase was implemented to fund fire stations.
Right.
So Verde is done, Augusta Road is done, and the next was to be Stone Ave. And I know that's part of the big picture look that the team's been doing, but now I'm seeing the funding going down from what we predicted, and that kind of raises the flag.
We do have a specific project set up for the Stone Avenue Fire Station.
But the West End, West End, where is the West End Fire Station? It is the oldest and in the worst shape, which makes little sense to do it last.
But, well, so I'm just going by the priorities that had been set.
I know.
But.
Number fifty-nine is our Stone Avenue Fire Station with one million that's sitting in yet. And we had.
So is that money reserved for Stone Ave and set aside beyond this?
Correct.
Okay.
Above a billion.
Okay, it's on, okay.
Where is West End?
What if, okay, so we know Augusta Road was about a three and a half million dollar fire station.
It was a two-story.
Okay.
We're looking at ways to save this current environment right now. Public Chief recognized that that six million dollar station probably lost eight today.
I mean, to me, it's function.
The second story is significant loss of potential one-story, restructure on the property that is identified as a hill system.
Will that be adequate for the firemen to stay?
Absolutely. We wouldn't build something that's outstanding.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm saying, is it going to be big enough? I mean, will you have enough room?
I think it's more like a ranch-style home. You take up a little bit more land, a longer story than our regular two-story buildings.
Just to close that, you're saying there's a million set aside for Stone. This puts, where was it, a million in in the next year's budget. I don't have much confidence that a million would cover a new fire station for Stone, but I may be wrong.
Probably wouldn't. This is a snapshot in time. This is for the FY twenty four, given the many, many priorities that council's kind of set forth with the staff, trying to balance all those priorities, recognizing we can't get to a fully funded project in FY twenty four. We have a number of options that we can deploy going forward. We didn't want it to drop off the radar screen. That's why we continue to put kind of banking saving up for that project. We can accelerate it with bond financing. We can put more dollars to it next year. But this is just a snapshot in time of the FY twenty four, what we believe, given all the other priorities that we can afford to set aside for the Stone Avenue Fire Station.
And I'll repeat again, where is the West End?
Chief is with the accreditation committee right now. Brian's not here, is he? He can answer that, Lillian, but my recollection of the priorities right now, as I understand them, would be Stone Avenue, then the airport, and then I think West End. I think Brian will tell you that there's been significant investments in West End Fire Station in the past years. We'll pull those numbers up. You know what we spent on the West End in the last several years?
I don't know.
That fire station?
The only thing about it is the oldest fire station. It don't matter what you, you're just patching it up. That's what I'm saying. For, for the people who work in the poor chief coming in with this old fire station there, you know, all I'm saying is that it's been patched up, and it's always the next. Now, here's what I'm confused about. In the heck, does the rest of them get in there before this one? This is the third time I've heard you say that it's the next one. And it may not have been you because you might not have been a mayor, the manager at that time. But I'm just saying, it's always behind somebody else. That's got to stop, folks. I mean, it is the oldest fire station. Those people are suffering. Yeah, you got to spend stuff on it because you got to patch it up so they can stay in it when it rains.
You know, I think for, for those of us, I guess relatively new, we inherited this priorities of fire stations that's been now coming on the fourth year. We're still talking. Well, I'm saying that that priority, that list is something I came into. Don't know how it got formed. But clearly, I think it'd be beneficial maybe in a work session down the road to talk through fire stations.
Based on today's discussion, we can set some time aside to go through those priorities and how we've gotten where we are.
The last time we did it too.
It is the oldest fire station. That's priorities. You should always not build something brand new when you got somebody else waiting down here with an old, old abandoned fire station, basically. They're in there, and yes, you might have spent it because you got to keep them dry. You got to keep, got to keep a roof over their head. You got to have a place. The equipment stuff burnt out. And all I'm saying is that it should be the next one. There shouldn't be. It shouldn't be number three. It should be number one.
Well, let me, like, the oldest fire station was Stone Avenue and Augusta Road. Those are the oldest. That was built in nineteen seventy. The others were built in nineteen forties. So we're just, we're trying, we did it. Everybody on council went out and did a tour, walked into it, all the stations, and those were the ones that were most out of date just in terms of the structure and the back staircases and all.
But I'm saying you got the airport now that just came up, and now it's still in front of West End.
Is there a process?
There's a, there's a process.
There's, there's mapping software. As the city grows its boundaries right now, we're in the process of evaluating where new stations may go. As we look at renovating and existing stations, it may be an opportunity to, to close that station and move it into a more advantageous geographical location or response time. So I, I, I think we've heard council loud and clear on this one. We'll schedule some time to kind of walk you through it. It's, it is a pretty, it's a deep dive into that process on how they evaluate where they place a certain, certain station. And there's a lot of that at play right now, particularly on the south end of the city. We need, we need some additional resources.
Well, if, if we just approved the woven, to go over there with all of those projects, I'm saying, I don't know where else you're going to have a critical need for people to live when we're moving all of these apartments and stuff and houses over there, and now you're going to say that somewhere else more critical than that? You know, I'm just saying, let's be clear about it. Let's don't play games. If you're going to move that fire station, you're going to catch hell from not only me, but for others because of, of the fire station location, and we keep putting more units of housing over in that area. Tearing down some, you're tearing down one lot, putting five lots in one space. I'm just saying, that kind of stuff, you can't say that there's someplace else that needs more.
Is there an, an objective process by, any use?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to know what it is.
We'll get that set.
We'll schedule some.
Thank you so much.
We'll schedule some. I don't think, I don't know, I've never heard of any serious discussion about moving that station. In fact, it's on Academy Street, sort of makes it like the Gus Road is like the perfect.
Oh, yeah, it is the place.
Find any, you want to put on a major corridor, and Academy is still a major corridor. So for all the reasons stated, can't imagine moving it. Plus, you can't just get, plus, try to buy land in that area, you know.
You hear me? It's worth probably four billion dollars because it's been there so long, and every blade of grass over there is ten times what it was last week.
Okay, let's move on to our next item, open space acquisition.
Uh-oh.
That project shows total funding of a million dollars, including five hundred this year and five hundred set up for next year. Our current project balance is about eight hundred and forty-seven thousand. That's after we purchased the horse on Balden Road. Police body cameras, this is an annual recurring cost for those, those, that project at two point seven million has been funded here to date. Three hundred and seventy-one is received each year. We've got that same amount planned for next year.
And we, we get that into grant funding? That's, is that a path through or?
Now, this is general fund contributions for public safety. We do receive some grant funds, but this is the general fund portion.
Does that, so that's, I'm sorry, I'm catching my, so we're adding ten more police positions?
Yes.
But we're putting the same towards police body cameras?
How does that work?
We'll find out next year.
No, I mean, I mean, how do we get to?
How do you add ten and you don't have?
I think what the question is, how do we, how, how does the pricing work on the body cameras? I mean, is this a, just a flat fee, no matter how many we have? Is this a, a, a per camera?
This is a really specific number.
This is maintenance for their camera.
So right now, we're, we're in a period as well. It's a contractual agreement with Exxon and the body cameras. So Major Blair is one that's, is deep in that one. However, there, there's agreements to where they replace cameras, replace equipment for free. They provide us with equipment. And we assure that, that our officers would equip body cameras. When you get more towards the upper management level, we don't have body cameras. So when you say, hey, we got two hundred and X amount of police officers, well, only a certain number of them are going to be equipped with body cameras. So you're not, the number doesn't, it's not going to be exactly two hundred and fifty-five. But we do maintain extra cameras as well for immediate replacement and repair. So we do, that process is thought out here.
Do we have some kind of phased replacement program? Like we could, so we had an issue with radios. Some years ago about, you know, all of a sudden getting hit with a really big chunk of money to get our radios. Up to, up to, no, that might have been before you came on board, John. But, but, you know, to me, body cams would be the same kind of thing. You know, it's almost like a public works vehicle. You have a phased replacement where you have it on speed.
We're already working on that as well. Because if you've noticed, some of our officers, you'll see a square on the chest, but you'll see one on the shoulder. Those, those shoulder cameras, those are no longer, they're no longer making that design. So we are transitioning back into a chest-mounted position, which is a heavier duty camera, because anytime those get wet, we'd have issues. If we were without the rain, we'd throw a raincoat on over it. Sometimes it would. So we're going back to that, that type of norm. So we do have a transition.
Moving on, we'll look at Stone Avenue improvements. We're showing a total funding amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, of which it was received in twenty twenty-three. We have six hundred and fifty programmed in for next year. The study, traffic study is almost complete, so we'll plan to begin construction hopefully in FY twenty-four.
Yeah, and a lot of that, a lot of that is going to be cosmetic. A lot of, it doesn't have to be necessarily infrastructure changes, but to make things a lot safer over there. So thank you, Clint, for your work.
This is STAND check. Thing again, HDR.
HDR. HDR.
Why would we, since I don't think we've gotten moving on that, why would we have lowered that number from what we thought it would be last year? The last year we had it seven fifty. Now we're at six fifty. I mean, if anything.
I think that number will get us through the design process before we get into any type of, what's our?
Yeah, we're, we're under design now. We're doing the traffic analysis under design. We'll start identifying those specific scuttle improvements. As we work further into the design, I see us being in design through spring of next year. We do have the pedestrian. Uh, we do have the pedestrian, have its beacon signal, the pedestrian signal there at Wilton. Um, that's actually construction that's being funded through the NIB, but that's part of this design. Or that construction will move forward and sooner than the rest of the streetscaping improvement.
Yes, correct.
We'll get, this will get us through the design as we narrow down the scope of the work for the improvements. We'll have a better idea of what construction.
All those kids in Viola can now get to Stone Academy and back. We got kids that can cross that street. There's dangers watching families trying to cross that street right now. That'll be very helpful.
That's gonna be a, the first phase.
That'll be helpful.
Is the state DOT attitude pretty good on Stone? We, when they kind of came along on Augusta Road, how's it going on Stone?
It's going well.
Issues?
Going very well. We meet with them monthly and this is all we've discussed with them. So we're supportive of the pedestrian signal. And they've been supportive of some of our primary concepts.
Something tells me that cost is gonna come in high.
Yep.
And, and, you know, Stone and Wade Hampton need some love from this council. And I, I, you know, I don't, once we get those numbers in, I hope that love will be there.
Yeah, and I don't see this as a one, one, you know, one time and you're done. I see this as, as an opportunity to get us.
Not with the hill up there, not with the hill coming, oh, no. There, 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 no, 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 there's gonna be more love.
Wade Hampton definitely, you know, we got a few years of love in there. And then, um, and then Stone Avenue, um, we're gonna see what the costs come in. But I don't necessarily see it as a one time job. But thank you for, for the love, Dorothy.
I'm showing you the love, John. You lost a hundred thousand dollars this year. I tried, we'll get it back next year.
I'm, I'm, but I'm confident that we're, that we're on the right track here.
You know, what's also nice about this is that all the development on Stone is now required, of course, to build sidewalks and required to build sidewalks at our standard. And so it's nice, we're getting the sidewalk done, work done that we thought we were gonna do. Now it's being done with the private sector.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to traffic calming. We have received nine hundred and forty-six thousand here to date and four hundred thousand came in this year with another four hundred planned for next year. Crescent Avenue is in the petition phase. Croft Street, um, has been, the plan's been sent for approval. And our project balance is currently five hundred and fifteen thousand for the construction phase.
In what section of Crescent? Mayor Church?
Crescent Avenue, yeah, I'm not sure that's part of the neighborhood.
Okay.
So it's probably includes several streets.
Yeah.
Um, Wade Hampton Boulevard has five hundred thousand funded to date with five hundred coming this year and five hundred planned for next year. They're working on final design of the corridor. And we have programmed all of that into a purchase order. So there is an imbalance now because it's just waiting to be spent. The next group of projects listed are, are new projects that are receiving funds during FY twenty-four. We have the Church Street Bridge, two hundred and fifty thousand. IT projects, um, various IT improvements that are in the debt of a million dollars. The pavement management match of a million dollars. Ridge Road of five hundred thousand dollars. And that brings our total funding for the general fund at twelve point three million dollars.
Karen, you skipped, or if you skipped, maybe said it, corridor safety. How do we define what, what that is?
So that's our, uh, citywide pedestrian safety study, if that's going. We identified our top ten corridors, probably corridors, through that process.
So the two fifty for this upcoming year is to address those things to.
Starting implementing, that'll be a multi-year, main type project.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and Clint, one thing that I would emphasize is we rolled out the pedestrian study, but it's, but it's not as if every time we appropriate or do something like Stone Academy School, it's not like, we're like, oh, here's the pedestrian study that we're putting in place. Y'all have that in place. That's your, that's your roadmap. That's your guideline of what you're doing with all these different pots of money, correct?
So one other item that I've.
Yep, thanks.
I just wanted to bring up what we're looking at in this slide. This total of twelve million, three hundred and eighty thousand that is programmed for the general fund for this year. If you looked at our ten year average of what has been funded from the general fund into the capital projects fund, it is seven point nine million. So this is considerably higher than our ten year average.
It's less than what we thought it would be a year ago, and it's not the highest. And Karen, that, we had a little, so that, because you're.
The highest was the highest.
Last year was. So last year was thirteen point three million. So this year is.
There have literally been four years where it has been over ten million.
Okay, so this is not the highest year of general fund CIP. But we're trimming it from what we projected it would be because of concern for recessionary impact.
Just, I'm, you know, we have a very unstable economic. Being cautious. All right, so this next slide, this is showing you the projects that were funded out of the general fund this past year. But there are, we have reduced or combined. And so there is no, um, projected amount that's gonna be budgeted into these projects this year. So for the bike and pedestrian infrastructure, we moved their amount of, um, I think two hundred and fifty or two hundred and fifty thousand, I think. We moved it into the greenways and trails. And that's because that project, um, we're trying to incorporate this aspect into all of our other greenways and trails projects. So we just want that money together this year. So we have in the past funded to date, five hundred thousand. We have two hundred and fifty that went in this year. And our balance left in that project is right at two hundred thousand of the, um, items that we still haven't completed yet. Our commercial corridors project is showing five point one million funded to date, two of which came in FY twenty-three. There's a project balance of three point almost two million. And so, um, city staff is going to focus on existing, um, projects, sub projects within this for this new budget year.
Last I checked, though, we still don't have enough projects. We have more money than we have projects, but I think that's more of a marketing issue than anything else. Especially on, uh, just working, especially, um, Wade Hampton. As you're familiar, there, a number of people have taken advantage of this program, but it's pretty obvious that a certain number have not.
Yeah.
Including somebody that talked to us about it, but never did anything like the Shaw properties. The one that we talked to about it, but I had to drive by and it still looks like the same old facade to me.
Yeah.
So maybe there's some door knocking, um, like.
Yeah, some scatterings of folks that have taken advantage of it.
Yeah. I mean, the ones that have, it looks great. Big, big change.
We also have a cultural corridor project that has funding of about four million. And we have a project balance of three point five remaining. And there is design in progress in that one. Green Line Spartanburg area improvements. The project has a total of five hundred thousand funding and, um, an RFP is to be issued in updating their master plan and feasibility studies. Next, we have intersection safety improvements at one point eight million, which includes two hundred thousand from this year. Our current project balance is almost one point two. Staff are currently, um, working with DOT. Next, we have.
Are we, are we doing a zero right there just because we've, we've got such a robust balance in there?
Our ED fund for the Viola Tiff District, we have, uh, almost two point seven million with, um, three hundred and thirty-three thousand that was added in FY twenty-three. And so there is that balance of about a million that will be used in the Tiff area.
Do we have plans now of how we're gonna use that money?
There, yeah, Shannon's working on it daily.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the, so that all of those things that happened at the, um, community center and all those things have been done in the process of being doing the work.
Working on it, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Uh, next, our Main Street trees. We have project total funding of two one million. And seventy-five thousand came in last year. We have an available balance of about three hundred and twenty thousand, which we feel like is more than adequate to cover our FY twenty-four projects. Our in-step program, um, total funding to date is three point three million, of which a million went in this year. Our current project balance is one point, almost one point eight. And we have, um, sidewalk projects funded through NIB during FY twenty-four, which is why we did not contribute any funds to you.
So we talked about that.
Yes, and we'll talk about it again in a little bit with Clint. Please. How about that?
That is a reversal of what we talked about.
So, moving on to street lighting upgrades. We have three hundred thousand, um, funded to date, a hundred came in this year. We have about a hundred and eighteen left. The Ridgeland Street, streetlight contractor is starting installation probably last week and hopefully gonna be completed mid-year. Um, sidewalk ADA improvements, we had five hundred thousand, a hundred of which came in this year. And our, um, project balance is about three hundred and twenty-seven. Work is continuing on, on this project.
Those, those are wild, wide, wildly popular.
ADA.
Yes, not only for.
Moms and strollers.
Moms and dads.
Moms and strollers.
And dads and strollers.
And finally, on this, we have our tree planting fund, um, originally funded at three hundred and fifty thousand. We added a hundred this year and our project balance is almost three hundred and thirteen. Funds are available for adequate coverage for our FY twenty-four tree planting.
Is that all, is that all penalties from tree ordinance or is it not related?
This is general fund contributions, which is not related to that one. It's to a different fund.
But the tree fund is a very healthy balance of that right now.
True story.
It's growing.
So I'm gonna have Dick DePalma step up so we don't have to listen to Karen all day. And he's gonna tell you about a couple of projects.
Uh, so the first one we have here is Academy downtown bypass. Uh, so most, most everyone knows what that entails is kind of being worked on in conjunction with cultural corridor. So we did have a few things come up in our public interaction. So, um, we had to wait for obviously basketball tournaments and Greek festivals to end before we could really get started on the next phases of construction. So we've already done the church intersection. And by the end of May, all the rest of the work will be sent to purchasing for advertisement for bids. So it'll be three different contractors working all, uh, separate intersections, doing, doing separate work. That'll all be on, on roughly about the same time. One of which is what you see on the picture here at East North, where we're doing as much, incorporating as much of Plisuria's plan as we can into our intersection upgrades to help with traffic flow and getting traffic diverted onto Academy.
And off of, through North Street.
Correct, and off of college essentially.
College.
Yeah. So we're taking away a lane from College to cultural corridor and we're trying to shift as much traffic as we can to Academy, which is currently under capacity. So we have a Academy road that's currently under capacity. We wanna get more cars shifted to that. And improve, improve, improve flow around the city.
You're gonna work on the traffic signals too, right?
Correct, they'll be all re-timed, um, while we work on. There's some LPIs going in, they'll lead pedestrian intervals for pedestrian crossings as well. So we're working on pedestrian safety in conjunction with all of that.
But the Plisuria did a traffic stud, impact study?
They did not do traffic, but we're just, we did the traffic analysis and we're just taking what they envisioned. We're just doing a small piece of it right here in front of Bonseport. So this is, this area right here is really popular for people to just run across the street. So we're essentially landscaping this area, putting a small fence and trucks around it to force people to come down to the.
We widened sidewalks, is that part of that?
Not with this project. We didn't, we don't have the funding to do that. We're just trying to.
The, the master, the master plan calls for good widening the sidewalks to connect the arena area to the downtown area better with a, like the NCAA, you can see the problem there, but that's a huge point. We had conversations with Christie Hall and head constable agent in Columbia, actually, with her and talked about, I told you all about, opportunity to at least test drive the area, um, between Christ Church Cemetery and the old auditorium site to look at what would happen if we took out a lane there. I think we, we, at some point, we're gonna need wider sidewalk there and make it more pedestrian friendly and have a critical piece. But I just think we have a chance to put out some orange cones or something and try out what would be like if, if a portion of that lane was taken out. I don't mean all the way to the arena, but just that first block or so. Um, to, um, what's it, I believe it's the one before that brought, would be brought us, yeah.
Brought us.
We have some live.
So we had a lot of discussions with DOT about letting us do that. Let's just kind of see how it goes. Most, most people don't use that lane. People who take a right off of church tend to go in the middle lane and people who come straight tend to go in the middle lane. Just wanna reiterate that again to you guys.
But Nick, this takes into account the impact of the Plisuria development or not?
It is, it's, no, it is not. It's just for, we kind of threw this, uh, landscaping. It is mostly for pedestrian.
It's consistent with it.
It's consistent with the Plisurian plan, but this is, this piece is being done for pedestrian safety and to divert traffic onto Academy.
Okay. And all that's gonna help with pedestrian safety, feeling that you're comfortable walking through that area. It's certainly gonna help with traffic flow too.
So this slide is just for cultural corridor. And thanks for, to planning, for helping us with these renderings. So this is the piece that has to come. So everything we just talked about on Academy, DOT has determined has to be done before we can take away a lane from College. So this will go to purchasing for advertisement immediately after the other phases of Academy. So we're probably going to be working kind of all at the same time, but we're trying to time it to where Academy has done, or most of it has done, before we actually take away a lane from College. But we've already started work on cultural corridor. So it's gonna be a lot of careful timing with five contractors kind of working in close proximity and together, though, we'll be able to work it out. And maybe.
I know, I know, we've had so many discussions about this, less every year. This is such a critically important pedestrian quarter to finally connect Main Street to the heritage, to the museums and everything. I know y'all have it in a nice little sequence, sequential with everything happening first, but I just wanna urge again to take a look at it in terms of the, of the ways to move this thing faster.
We're, we're scheduled to get it.
Every day, people are using the old sidewalks and it's not a good thing.
We'll be getting everything to purchasing within the next month or so. So we'll be moving on it pretty quickly.
Still feel good about the budget numbers?
It'll be, it'll be close.
Our, our prices were seen lightly, very elevated from what we're seeing.
And a big question.
It's so slow, you know?
A big question mark is still that final block, um, with the canvas redevelopment. So we're, we're actually bidding that as an alternate because then we still have a big, big question mark kind of hanging off there with that. So we'll, we'll work it out in the meantime, but we're still, that also would impact a lot of it.
When does Canvas go before planning or has it?
It's already been before DRB has approval.
So Church Street Bridge improvements, just a quick update. This is an SEDOT project to rehab the Church Street Bridge. We were, uh, great that we were able to partner with them and be able to incorporate some of these, uh, additional enhancements into the project. All new street lighting, a wider sidewalk on that west side of the bridge, um, the downtown facing side of the bridge. And, um, getting some planters installed just to try to improve pedestrian safety and, um, kind of enhance the pedestrian realm of the road. Projects, kind of the schedules, I'm waiting on an update from DOT right now. We're looking at probably our next public information meeting happening sometime over the summer. Um, and they were looking to, um, obligate construction funds for the fall and bid that out. So realistically, we're probably looking at early next year and the earliest before construction will start on this project. We will have a participation agreement, um, with DOT to pay for some of the enhancements that are being incorporated and that's what's, uh, in the FY twenty-four budget. We're also working with Stand Tech, um, to just kind of look at traffic mitigation improvements that can be implemented during the construction of this project. We know it'll probably have a, uh, it's expected to have a pretty big. We know it'll probably have a, it's expected to have a pretty big impact on just everyday traffic with the bridge, during the bridge construction. So we're going to look at things that we can do to kind of mitigate, offset some of those impacts.
Clint, I, I bet there's a lot of US 29 traffic that comes off of coming from Atlanta or wherever, that's heading toward Taylor's, Greer, et cetera. There are probably some alternate routes that you can notify drivers, like, you know, don't try to use US 29 through downtown.
Yeah, I think there's, whether it's getting messages out there, communications with the people coming off of 85, we're going to be kind of catching them at the extreme ends where the traffic kind of comes this way and try to get them to more. So this is our special emphasis neighborhood sidewalks program. We do have about $900,000 in InStep funds that is going to supplement the Section 108 program. Just wanted to give you all an update on, on the, on the project. These are all the streets that were selected. You can see we've got designs completed on several of them. We're well into the design on others and we're starting designs this summer on the streets within Nickel Town. One of the things that's come up as part of the HUD funds is we do have to have an environmental study completed for these streets. So we're in the process now of, of getting the environmental review underway. It should be a fairly quick environmental process. These are very low impact type of projects, just sidewalk construction. They still have to kind of look at those impacts from an environmental standpoint.
What kind of impacts are there?
Rightfully none on these projects, but you have a doc. I mean, I think we do have a couple of right-of-way impacts. Ackley Road is one where we would have to have a little bit of right-of-way, as well as Stag Street. And I think we've worked out Rebecca, Rebecca Street's pretty tight too, but we may have.
I had a question about that. Jill, Jill Lowdon, former council member, asked me this a few weeks ago. We worked several, many years ago, probably 10, 11 years ago, we did the Ackley Road sidewalk. But we couldn't go any further because they wouldn't give up the right-of-way. We ran into that issue, so it literally stops. But when you visit those homes along there, and Jill visited them with me 11 years ago, they, those people have points. I mean, their yards are just much smaller than other yards, so they didn't want the sidewalk. So therefore it stops there. But we built a hugely expensive sidewalk all the way down there. It's like 10 years ago. Have they changed their mind?
No, well, we're, we haven't got to the process of actually approaching them yet. We have heard, we have, we did some surveying and we did hear from one of the residents that they were not.
Well, see, they ran into, they didn't want the sidewalk.
Right. So we haven't, we haven't.
She, she did everything she could to persuade, discuss, you know? So that's why it does what it does.
Well, one of the, the good thing is we have an option of kind of circling back on to Roosevelt Street and going through Roosevelt Heights and kind of come into the backside of the community center.
Okay, let's just, maybe you have the question, I wanted the same thing. We went round and round with those streets. There's some others on there too that we wanted to do years ago, but they didn't want to do it. So we go where people will let us work with them.
Yeah, I think there's three properties on Ackley where right-of-way is, we do have some right-of-way constraints.
But you're good to go with, at the crossing of the Swan private by First Baptist?
Yes.
That was good to go?
Yes.
Great.
One thing, I'll go back real quick. One thing I want to point out is this is a kind of sign of just the increased cost we're seeing. When we originally did these estimates, which was about two years ago now, we were, had a $340 linear foot for our sidewalk projects. And now we're seeing $420 linear foot.
Do we anticipate that that's ever going to go down?
Not from what I'm seeing.
Because it was my understanding that a lot of those things were getting cheaper.
I, I, I think as you see, right now, one of the things we're seeing on the asphalt paving side is we don't have enough contractors availability. So we have a supply and demand type of issue. Right now, I do think there's just so much demand out there for the few contractors that are available, that we're just seeing much higher prices.
Have we looked elsewhere? I mean, like Charlotte, Atlanta?
It's scarce for contractors or for?
They got plenty of work done, I would guess.
Well, we, we do our bids, our bids go out through our national or through our regional contracting agencies for notification. But there's just so much work going on out there right now. So I think it will be a while before we see prices come back. And I don't think we'll see them come back to prices we used to see.
But you think that's a, a labor demand issue, not necessarily a material issue?
Not so much material anymore. I know cement there, we have a shortage and that was driving costs up. Steel was, you know, prices were, they've kind of normalized recently. I think it's more of a labor demand.
So basically, you're going to tap for somebody to get into the paving. Or he's encouraging some other people to do it.
All right, so wait a minute. So maybe you're getting to this, but then again, why are we not funding sidewalks in CIP like we normally do for the million?
With, for the InStep? So we've got, we've got close, we've got 900,000 going towards this from InStep.
All right, so, so maybe I'm confused. I'm sorry?
That's from our project funds opening.
So we've always given a million dollars to InStep per year. And then NIB gave us a significant bump to tackle a lot of the sidewalks in our lifetime. But did I misread the last slide on InStep? And your slide says no more million. And that is not what we discussed. When we did the NIB, it was crystal clear that the sidewalk money was in addition to the million for InStep. I mean, that.
I understand, I think we've got a production issue too. We can only deliver so many sidewalks in the course of the year. So we feel like this is striking a good balance between the millions and millions and millions of dollars we have dedicated for sidewalks in the next several years that we can actually deliver on.
What, and is?
We can afford to take apart $1 million, also given the other priorities that have.
I mean, here's what I don't get. Before the NIB, we were giving a million a year and saying we're never going to get to our sidewalk, our matrix that bubbles projects to the surface in our lifetime. Now we have the NIB and we're pulling back the reins beyond that. Is it a bandwidth of design, a bandwidth of pavers? Or that it's 200, that it's 420 linear foot? Because if there's one thing I think our community loves and appreciates, it's sidewalks. And, and what I'm hearing is different than what we agreed to a year ago when we did the NIB. But you're saying we don't have bandwidth to do all of it. Where's the, where's the bottleneck on the bandwidth? Is it us? Is it contractor? Is it, can't be money because we're not giving the million like we said we would, so I'm confused.
Well, we are, it does take a little bit of time to get the designs done.
And we do all those in-house.
Well, with the NIB, with that large of a magnitude of projects, we are using consultants for those designs. We, these are the special emphasis neighborhoods. We are doing some of these designs in-house. But as we get into the NIB projects a little bit later on.
Let's put it in context with all the NIB.
So right now, we're in a very heavy design phase, we are moving towards construction.
Did we do all of the cultural corridor in-house?
No.
Design? Because what, you know, we're, we're slow to the game and we're paying a price. Do you see what I'm saying? You just said on the cultural corridor. You know, the extra time is now costing, and I don't know how to rectify that.
But I do think, one thing, we have a record amount going towards sidewalk construction all around. We got that with the NIB, we just accelerated. But we have always, we've always had a bandwidth issue with just getting ones we fund at record levels to actually build. So it's always a good question to ask is how can we get more people to the party to build these things?
Well, one thing that I would suggest is, or at least promote, that if we are going to put a zero on the line this year because of the bandwidth, because of probably the logjam of design, build, et cetera. I just don't want to make a habit of this. I don't want us, I don't want every year to have a zero just because, oh, we got the NIB.
And that was the conversation we had a year ago. When we got the NIB, there was concern that that would take away. And now that concern is being played out in real time.
That's right.
It would be, it would be as if Stormwater and Sewer, which I think was allowed a special emphasis, was in addition to CDBG funds. And all of a sudden, we canceled the CDBG funds. It's, it was incremental. The NIB was incremental to what we were already doing. And I understand if we have a bandwidth problem in design, certainly. But when we delay it, we just pay more down the road. So I don't, I guess I don't really understand that philosophy.
But NIB is to accelerate system. We could just do it the old way, the old fashioned way, like a yard a year, a yard a year.
So NIB had, I believe, 8.7? 8.7 for sidewalks, right? Plus a million from InStep. So that's, I'm just roughly remembering 8.7 for sidewalks. Is that about right?
Uh, yes, that sounds right. We've got a slack cord.
So. I might be the only one that feels that way. It's a whole lot more difficult to get it back.
Well, I mean, I, I under, I understand what you're saying about the NIB accelerating. But, but I also remember that when we talked about it, we were very clear that we wanted it to be in addition to. Now, I also understand that, particularly because of the cost, while we may be holding back on some projects. But, but I think we need to be prepared, if we're going to do a zero this year, to try to find a way where we can do 2 million next year. Or whenever we get to a point where there's backlog that, that's happening because of, because of contractors or whatever goes out the window. We have, we have tons of areas that need sidewalks in the city. And the NIB does not rectify all of that. So if we're not looking ahead, we're going to end up in, in sort of the same situation we're in right now. Because I can, I can point to, I mean, you, you, you need proof of it. I can drive you around Greenhouse, I can drive you around Nickel Town and show you tons of areas that need sidewalks.
Well, plus one more to put a dot on that I. When we package projects for bid, theoretically, we're getting better pricing and perhaps more interest in the bidding process.
We, we packaged the, one of our first sidewalk packages that we put together, we had Traction Street, Cook Street, what else was in that? No Street.
And Al Donklin.
And Al Donklin. And we had two bidders. I think second bid was a million dollars higher than the low bid. That was the pricing fluctuation we were seeing. One bid was higher than our budgeted amount or our estimated amount, but it was with our budgeted amount. But we had, we're seeing a wide range of pricing these days. We do have every project under design. We're going to have shovel-ready projects and we're trying to package them to get, make it more competitive. Sometimes that does draw out the construction timeline for a project when, when you, when one contractor has it, he's kind of.
Yeah, but at least you got it moving forward.
You got it moving forward.
Karen, do we use any of the InStep money for debt service on the, on the NIB? That was straight general fund money?
We, we did not for a very many.
That's what we said.
Well, in addition to.
Yeah, I mean, it's a policy decision.
I mean, it's what we, it's what we talked about and we had a lively discussion on it. I wish Will was here because he was crystal clear.
I think we're all getting on this on that. I think we're going to find a way to, Will, if that's, if that's kind of the way of looking, in all due respect to the technical issues and the bandwidth and all that. But I think this is our priority project, I don't think there's a question about that.
Do we have the ability to pour sidewalks in-house?
I mean, the county pays their trail.
That was just it, we used to, and it was kind of sad.
Small segments.
But to Ken's, Ken's point, Ken and you're in the special emphasis on the, that new program, we have, that is indeed supplemental to the InStep. That was, there's no question about that. You get both. But we have to put the million dollars back in. I sort of thought. But we, this is just a proposal. If there's something here that you all would like to reduce, we can, we can buzz that number up. We're on such a roll on this. And we, about a couple of years ago, we revised our criteria for when you get a sidewalk. So it's always been a popular program. We're making up, you know, the whole fundamental program is we're making up for that time period of 1960s and 70s when no cities, unless we were built sidewalks. I mean, Greenville did build sidewalks, NC did Tulsa, Oklahoma, pulling in South Carolina. And that's 60s and 70s. So if you look at a lot of Nickel Town, you look at Gower and Parkins Mill, same thing, no sidewalks, no sidewalks.
Speaking of sidewalks. They, they service more than, buddy, our expert over there. But they service more, obviously more than our walkers and runners. And I just want to give a quick, I, I think a good opportunity to give Clint some kudos and his team. I've got a woman in her late 50s who's got early onset Alzheimer's. And really, the only joy that she has is to be able to walk around one square block. But some of the sidewalks started getting a little bit raised from the roots. And our team is so good that they went out and they shaved those sidewalks so that she could and others could walk without tripping. And so those little things, we appreciate very much.
Sidewalk grinding, all that works does a really good job.
That's all right.
Well, let's do a point. When we get to the end of the presentation today, if y'all see something you'd like to trade off, plus this, this up and redo, you know, we can, we can make some adjustments before we get to our meeting on the phone sec.
Wade Hampton Boulevard is a project we've been working on with DOT for seven or so years now. We also did our own strategic plan in 2018. So DOT's scope was looking at Wade Hampton from essentially church all the way into career. So we've been working on with them on what they're doing so that we can accelerate the portions that's in the city limits. So they are finishing up with what, with their project. We're working with them and ACOM, which is also the firm that worked on their traffic analysis for this project. So it's going to, it's kind of a seamless transition where DOT was working with ACOM. Now we're both working with ACOM. It's kind of a project we've been working on together for seven or eight years. We're kind of in alignment with what we want to do. What you can see here is from the strategic plan that we did in 2018, realigning Bradley Boulevard and just making that intersection a little bit safer across from Bob Jones. But it also targets a corridor approach to safety. So it's increasing bicycle safety, pedestrian safety, as well as vehicular safety along the corridor. So the whole goal is slow down speeds, make it a safe place to walk, but also importantly, a safe place to cross Wade Hampton. So right now, you've got a very wide southern lane highway through there. If you're in one neighborhood, want to go to the other, you know, you don't feel very safe crossing the street. So one of the big goals, what we identified early on was making this corridor a safer place to not just walk up and down the corridor, but also get from neighborhood to neighborhood and connect those neighborhoods back together. So there's, there's a big key on landscaping, pedestrian safety, high visibility sidewalks, and also traffic. So it's, it's a pretty big project. That's why it's taken so long to get everybody on one page, but we're ready to go with it. And we're gearing up for our first public.
Yeah, and, and a couple of thoughts on that. First of all, very excited over here. And, you know, I'm, I am convinced that like so many of the projects we do, you invest in the infrastructure, then you're going to get higher quality businesses, restaurants, retail, residential, that will want to invest or reinvest along that corridor. If you stand at North Point, you look out, and which we made a big investment in North Point a few years ago, Bob Jones does a great job of where they are. If you stand and look north, I swear you can probably, you know, it probably has not changed a whole heck of a lot, except for some areas in the last few decades. And so it's a really great opportunity to reinvest in a, in a corridor that I think we will see the return on investment from investors that want to invest in property there. So appreciate everyone on council, your support and staff as well.
It's changed the last 10 years. The neighborhoods that's around Wade Hampton on both sides are just on fire with renovations and new development, new houses. And you can see it, families returning with kids and all that stuff. So it's, it's really ripe for a commercial corridor upgrade as well.
Yep. Is this in direct alignment with the Moltro plan, with Trip Moltro's plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Came directly from the plan.
And, and at the corner of Pleasantburg and where.
And, and at the corner of Pleasantburg and Wade Hampton, back when that plan was released, we got a lot of pushback from that, those corner guys. You remember that?
Yeah.
Um, is, is that, I mean, what, what's been their role in helping hold us out?
Strip all their auto and land.
Yeah, those are private properties that, you know, it's, it's an interesting little alignment of stores right there.
And they, they, you know, hey, they have a right to feel what they feel. I mean, we...
So, we can give them some luck.
Yeah, if you, you go on that little corner all the time, I mean, they have more wrecks there. They are stopped and started so many times.
I, I'm just saying, they, they need to be a big part of the conversation about when are we ready to do this? Where, and they need to be part of that process.
And, and just to highlight, this is, you know, it's not only just a big corridor into the city, but it's also a big piece of DOT's plans for the rest of Wade Hampton. So, we're, we're gonna meet them to it, but the idea is that we're leading the way for what the rest of the corridor is also going to like, all the way up to career and beyond.
Yeah, and, and part of the GPAT's long-range plan is to finally redo that Pleasantburg-Wade Hampton intersection. And so, I'm beating the bushes with legislators, GPATs, C-funds, anyone that'll listen to me, that to finally redo that intersection, because you literally go up north Pleasantburg, you gotta take a left-hand turn to Stan or Pleasantburg, or vice versa. And some of the folks that have been around a lot longer than me told me that Pleasantburg was supposed to be a natural loop around the city.
It was.
But Red Lobster got in the way. No offense to Red Lobster, but no offense to those folks, but...
Don't hate on Red Lobster.
Well, you don't have to, because they're, 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 they've changed. They're going down a little bit.
I'm picking on Red Lobster, but some, but, but I'm beating the bushes to somehow...
You got a cemetery now, though, so you're good. You got a cemetery now.
And they still have those cheese biscuits eating.
Those are so good.
They still have them.
Nothing's changed in fifty years of course.
Not even the table.
Mel and my demand is reflected cheese biscuits and Red Lobster.
Well, it needs, it needs to, that particular area, they need, that needs to be a little bit better. I got caught once. Fortunately for my daughter, she was able to come another way, but I caught it, something was happening at one of the corners somewhere, and I knew, I just drove. I thought everybody was going that way. Well, forty-eight minutes later, I was at the same spot. And I'm just saying, so whatever they're gonna do with SCDOT, let us know who we need to call. Because I'm just saying, they gotta do something.
Yeah, convergence of two United States highways, one former interstate.
Yeah.
And I think that any changes are gonna be a lot bigger than the budget we would be able to afford. And so, obviously, I'm not an engineer, but I plan, assume that this would be in the tens of millions of dollars if you're gonna make real changes there, which will take state-funded GPATs, C-funds, maybe even some federal.
Yeah, so it's wanting to be a regional approach.
And please consider the, the graveyard, because when, when I was a Blue Star mother, we had a difficult time when there were funerals for the soldiers going through there. That was a difficult time trying to maneuver through this. Y'all make sure y'all take care of them.
That's now in John's district.
That's now in my district.
Okay, take care of John. It looks like I'm trying to move him.
You're gonna knock on doors in that.
Okay, let's move on to our hospitality tax fund.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, exciting stuff. So, our first project in this fund is our Greenways Trails. And as I mentioned earlier, the bike pedestrian lanes have been added to, to this funding as well. Total funding to date is three point three million, with a million coming in twenty-three and one point seven five million budgeted for next year. This is kind of a holding account for different projects, and then we go out and set up a new one, pulling money from here. Our current balance is three hundred and five thousand for these projects, but we've been very busy.
Yes, you have.
Um, next is our Lawrence Road Swamp Rabbit Trail project, receiving five million in funding, including one point five this year and one million planned for next year. The bridges are complete, and we've heard in various updates that we're still waiting on the county, county to start paving the divestments.
Karen, that number just sounds woefully low, because compared to what the bridges came in at, plus the paperclip, I thought we were up around seven.
The paperclip is in a separate project.
Oh, okay.
How about the bridges? Weren't the bridges around six?
Two point seven.
Oh, huh.
Right, three.
Right at five?
Five, seven.
We may have moved...
At what value?
We may have moved it between Greenways and Forest as well.
And what, what's? And what's the latest date that the county says they're not gonna pave the trail again? I mean, we, we've been waiting three years for the county to pave this.
As soon as we release the bridge, I hope.
We have a meeting tomorrow with Woods-Curran and Joe Cornell, and it's top on the agenda to figure out, okay, we've been doing, we've done what we're supposed to do. When, when are we gonna get the paving? When are we gonna get the project open? So, we'll keep, see what they say.
I've heard various rumors, well, well, kind of.
On your project report, you'll see line forty has seven point nine million. That's...
She said, be good.
She said, be good.
I told them to be good, but it ain't working.
Next, public safety cameras project has received two point five million, including two hundred...
Some of these people need to be moved out of this room, because they're acting up. But we gonna move up.
Public safety cameras. We have received funding of two point five million. Two hundred came in this year, and we're budgeting for another two hundred next year. It's an ongoing project where we install, replace cameras throughout downtown. Our current balance is two hundred and fifteen thousand. The Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridge Inspection Project to date has received funding of five hundred thousand, two fifty of which came in this current year. And we have another two fifty budgeted next year. It relates to the inspections and maintenance of the small pedestrian bridges, and the project balance there is two hundred and seven thousand. This next group of projects are new to receive funding in FY twenty-four, and this is the Cleveland Park Inclusive Playground for two million dollars.
Hey, Karen, I'm sorry. Back, let me just loop back to Swamp Rabbit Trail Bridge Inspections. So, we have two million for the Verde Bridge, now designed by the city. And what was the bid for that bridge, the breakout bid, when we got it two years ago? Do you remember?
The year.
Okay, so, so, three point four. So, then, that tells me, based on communications earlier, that two million should be close to covering it when we bid it. However, if not, because nothing's gone our way on that kind of thing yet, we have bandwidth in fund from at least two of those, I would think, to absorb. When the bids come in on the Verde, Verde Overpass...
I did price it on the bridge.
The county version?
Yeah, the county version, again, a few months ago, and it was close to five.
So, so, that tells me, based on what y'all have told me, that, that bid for that bridge could come in with the new redesign somewhere in the neighborhood of three point five to four million. So, my, 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 you know, gauntlet is, that project is very, very important to that community, and I'm not optimistic it's gonna come in at two, and I hope we will be able to seek the funds to cover the additional cost as it gets kicked, kicked a little bit down, before we take on new big things from H-Tax.
The good news is, H-Tax continues to outperform, so.
Thanks, Karen. Back to Cleveland Park inclusive play.
Okay, our inclusive playground, it, it will include not only a playground, but a shelter and a restroom. This is planned to be constructed near the stables.
Is that an addition to or inclusive of the private donation on this?
That does not.
Okay.
That's our base.
Is it right next to the animal hospital?
Right across the street, right over there.
Where the dog park used to be?
Yep.
A, a couple who have a child, a special needs child, lives in the area, and they approached us and offered up a significant amount of money, launched this project. And it's really a great addition to Cleveland Park and a great addition to people with hand with special needs kids. And so, anyway, that hadn't really been publicly announced. I guess we haven't rolled that out yet, but it's, it's a wonderful gift to Grebel. It's really the second time we've had private gifts in that vicinity, Cleveland Park, remember the earlier one?
Who's drawing the plan?
McAdams Firm at Charlotte. Next, we have our Cancer Survivors Park. We have new funding there for boardwalk replacement, two hundred and fifty thousand. We have a pump track and skate park, new for twenty-four, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And we have some public safety campus continuity, connectivity that goes from the park to our new facility on Halton, and that's fifty thousand dollars.
Should we, should we also get a pump track and sporadic?
We haven't even...
We're not that far yet.
Where is it? Do we know that?
We're working on that.
Okay.
The seven fifty.
An exciting location, an exciting location. There's a large constituency for it, and private donations are looking really, really good on that project, too.
For the pump, pump, pump deck of a skate.
Both skate park.
Karen, I know I'm always one line behind, but also kudos to Parks and Rec, who is diligently working, Lillian, you'll be interested in this, as part of our work in Cancer Survivors Park to gain public access to the bathrooms that are in that center.
Where?
The Cancer Survivors Park, that, their public restrooms, we're just trying to get public access. So, Tara has been very good at working on that agreement, and I'm eagerly expecting that. It's a good place for bathrooms.
Yes, it is.
Once again, to be the bathroom.
The, um, you can't, you can't have enough public restrooms.
You cannot.
You cannot.
You cannot. Impossible.
Impossible. Greenways Trails, Biking Head, one point seven five billion dollars. You know, I've brought this up a couple of times, and maybe it would fit in there, and I don't know if it's gonna be terribly expensive anyway, but just something to kind of clean up a little bit underneath Church Street on the Swamp Rabbit Trail.
Been long discussed.
We...
We got a plan for it.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, because I've got people who are like, you know, it's kind of just a little...
They got new money.
What's that?
They got new money.
Well, I'm thinking that might be...
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm willing to dedicate somebody's name right across.
Oh, yeah. Well, I agree, and, but I don't...
We're working on it.
So, when you...
Under Church, Church Trail.
When you come down from the Liberty Bridge...
By the Cancer Survivors.
Yeah. You come down Liberty Bridge, down the hill, like the, the road in front of Governor's School, Swamp Rabbit Trail, and it comes a little circle.
We've been working with Black Walker in that.
There, there may be a, where we don't, there may be...
I know it's a small potato.
Maybe an art project in that area, and we can, so if that happens, they'll come with some money.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Okay, we've already mentioned the Verde Swamp Rabbit Trail Crossing Bridge. So, the total funding from that hospitality tax for the capital projects this year would be six point two five million. And I think Nick will be back up here to talk about his projects.
Um, so, I know we're trying to, so I'll try to breathe. Lawrence and Haywood Bridge are complete. We've done final walkthroughs. There's a few bunch of items just to clean up, and then we're just waiting on the county to pay. So, we're, we're substantially complete, just wrapping up the year.
Same thing with the paperclip. I spoke to you all a couple of weeks ago, and since then, we are, construction is complete, waiting on a few last-minute items and safety signage, and it's gonna tie right into... It looks so great. I was certainly skeptical, as we all were. One time we saw the drawing, zigzag, I thought, well, yeah, it, it's easy to, to make it work. It's gonna be well-received.
What was the last slide? Can you still, go back?
It's all steamed.
Okay, so, we're about, I'm sorry, fast read it. Are we coming in about one point five under on that?
Four.
I don't know. I mean, they're there.
That's just what we spent the day. It doesn't mean anything.
Well, they're there. What more are we gonna spend?
We haven't processed the filing.
Yeah, still saying.
Karen, how much is gonna be left?
He's gonna give it to me first.
See, one, one point.
Send it to Verde. We're gonna need it.
One point five.
I would think we would. I mean, that would be natural.
That would be natural.
We'll get back into that overall project that we're gonna hold toward these trails, and we can accommodate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's some, you'll see the numbers in our picture. There's a little bit of money that we're gonna invoice.
We're holding invoice.
How speed can you get going down like that?
I'm not trying to.
Oh, Lord, that's scary.
No, yeah.
I will tell you, the running group loves it.
Roll right up into...
Love it. Both uphill and downhill. We love it.
Well, we have good signage that says no speeding here. Okay.
Yeah, so we're waiting on, before we pull the bear case.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Lawrence Road Trail Connections is, you know, again, part of the new, part of the trail extension, and this is an exercise. We have worked with AECOM to identify neighborhood crossings over Lawrence Road and tying into the trail. We had a really well-attended public meeting in March, and then we were at Nickel Town Neighborhood Association a few weeks ago, had good conversations with those guests. And now we're awaiting a summary document on the public input side of it, from AECOM, that we'll share with you all, and then looking ahead towards engineering goals.
And I just want to put a shameless plug, but really appreciation to staff for working me on, with me on Hillside Drive Bridge that connects Overbrook to the Swamp Rabbit Trail, the only place where District One has easy access to the Swamp Rabbit Trail. And so, to be able to put something over Hillside Drive that would allow our parents of strollers and cyclists, walkers, and everybody safely go from Land Hill over the Swamp Rabbits, very much appreciated. So, thank you.
Hillside was designed pretty wide.
It is.
And that is, that is an SCDOT road, I think we discovered? And we're repaving it.
DOT. Hillside is DOT.
It's DOT, that section, because we looked at repaving it, and isn't it on the repave list now?
Yeah, so that's...
So, there's the opportunity to...
There's an opportunity to make it in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There used to be a, that used to be a backwater narrow bridge over there. We, we had a chance to build a new bridge, or for the first time, we built something extra wide with the idea of maybe one day pedestrians or bicyclists might need it, so.
Well, and the Overbrook community was very helpful in pointing out that access point for them.
Yes. They're hot on it.
The people spoken. We listened, John. It was all good, but, but, and Ken, and it was all, I mean, that was about a year and a half ago. Glad that's coming to fruition.
Marshall is over. Let me move to the next.
It was listening. It was one, it was one guy.
As we get ready to celebrate one year of Union Park, we're still working on a handful of things out there. I think it's on a later slide, but that this is, that the share of that power holds on Hudson Street.
Yes.
Has been removed as part of the undergrounding project. And then some feedback we received from council, as well as the listed park. We enclosed the backside of the playground that runs alongside Wellers Street at the mounds and the natural playground to prevent any kids from wandering out into Wellers Street.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
That was a big deal for parents with children, so.
And grandparents trying to chase the three.
Because you lose the kids behind the hills, which is not a big deal, but the, that's the closed up.
But they slide down the hill and run right into the street. Trust me, I just saw that, and just stopped one kid.
You do.
It's a big deal.
This project is ongoing. You can see the, the photo of the...
Looking great.
Under construction. Just like its illustration is.
It is so pretty.
We're getting, we're getting more, that's awesome, more private donations for the wetlands and other things are circulating out there mostly, too, so.
And I want to be sure that we're not, that it's not flooding anymore. It seems, the water seemed to be a little bit high the other day, but we had more water than we needed to have there. But, but we have it, we have it where it needs to be. Okay, all right. If we need to slide it back a little bit, I just need to know.
Brand opening on the wetlands is next week.
Yep.
Yes.
Baseball field construction should start this summer. And then lastly, we are awaiting cost estimates from Harper on the Observation Tower, being a couple more.
Awesome.
And what is the plan for the baseball field?
It'll be a little league... It'll be a little league, regulation little league field.
How much saving?
That, so we've, we've got some bleachers that we already have bought. Then we're looking at an additional, basically fundraiser item for grandstand.
Oh, grandstand.
Behind home plate.
Oh, Jesus. Well, what's gonna happen to the guard? Oh, I'm worried about y'all.
You're thinking like the tower versus.
Okay, I'm just kind of worried, like, oh.
All right, let's move on to stormwater fund. Try to pick up pace. We have about forty, I mean thirty minutes to get through quite a few slides, so I'm gonna try to see if we can move forward. Stormwater fund each year after the operating and any capital equipment needs are provided, a portion of the revenue is available for stormwater projects. The total funding amount in twenty-three was one point two seven five million and the planned amount for twenty-four is one million. You may recall from our previous budget workshop, we had some equipment related to cleanup on the riverbank that would come from that fund and that totaled as one point one. As projects are ready to begin, the annual budget amount is assigned to them as needed. So this is a little bit different from what we've shown you in the other. But our projects start with the Long Road Flooding Project, which has been put on hold, but has one point four million budgeted and we have a balance of one point three million.
That's a state.
Remind me again, was it on hold?
That's a state road issue.
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
I know that's a big state road issue. We've been swaddling it about forever. How much is the state putting into it?
I don't know, I'm looking into the engineers.
That's ridiculous.
So why is it on hold?
Well, there's a chunk of it that benefits the county, I believe, too.
That's right.
So it is, it is a topic that have discussed with the county manager in the past, about potential cost share between city and county and D O T. So large numbers are not planned for by million dollar projects.
So that's what, that's why it's on hold, cuz we wait for an outing? Okay.
Okay, so please add that on the agenda when y'all have this meeting next week.
Okay, next, our stormwater asset management project. It includes the cost to inventory our stormwater system, provides a way to prioritize our upcoming projects, one point two million budgeted. We have a balance of six hundred and six thousand in that project. Our P and G stormwater mitigation, it is pending closeout. Our budget was four sixty-nine, we have a balance of eighty-six. So any of that leftover money will be reassigned to other projects if we don't have to spend, you know, in our last couple of invoices. Our Red Street Stormwater, budget of one point eight million and we have a balance of five hundred and forty-eight thousand. Construction is set to begin in July and we have money encumbered, so it's on a P O. But we've got another five hundred and forty-eight thousand left above that. Meyer Street Culvert, our bids are due on May thirty-first. Total budget is six seventy-four. We have a balance available of six hundred and eleven.
Is that at the curve? At the curve, right, that's right, Carpenter?
That's exactly.
Is that at Prussia Creek?
It's a trend to it. I believe it's the center.
Our Stone Lake Dam project has four hundred and two, almost four hundred and three thousand in it. The spillway design is underway for that. Our Southern Side Stream Bank project has six hundred and fifty-one thousand with that same amount in a balance. They're securing easements and getting the construction permits. And then our stream restoration and stabilization project, this is a holding account for where we put money in and then assign it out to the various projects. We've done all of that for this year, so the balance right now is sixty-seven thousand. And then Karen, on that, stormwater.
What is our annual revenue in on stormwater fee, Paul?
Six, over six million is the annual revenue in the stormwater fund. But you must understand that we have to pay our crews, you know, there's a lot of salaries.
Sure, sure, sure.
Maintenance expense, maintenance expense. We have debt that's paid out of that fund.
Right.
We have a general fund transfer that's paid for admin costs related to the fund. And then any equipment purchases.
But our intake on fees is roughly six million.
I think six million, three or four.
Six, five is predicted.
Six, five is for any other revenue we might have in there as well. And so now I'm gonna let Paul talk about that.
Let's not go quickly on some of these highlighted, highlighted projects. So Stone Lake Dam, obviously, we've been looking at a, an emergency spillway capacity for the dam. We do have AECOM started with a design process for that and also speaking with BHAT on the permitting.
Thank you. Does it still have a, like a Stone Lake Association Committee or something?
Couple of guys.
They do. And, and jurisdiction there, the dam is kind of part of there.
So Paul will correct me, but they own the earth and we own the road.
We have a road on the dam.
We have a road on their dam.
And the dam is good. The dam, the integrity of the dam is good?
Integrity of the dam is fine, except it doesn't have your traditional spillway, emergency spillway for a large possible, the maximum possible event. Southern Side Stream Stabilization, I'm not sure if I've had the opportunity to show you about this project or if you, if you, if you're aware of it at all. But it's, if you can imagine Unity Park, then there's a, there's a creek that's coming in from this direction, from West Washington down into one of the existing wetlands. This was a project identified in our stream assessment program as well as just the neighborhood Bethel Church of God brought it to our attention. You'd be hard pressed to see some of this without a machete. It's, it's gonna be a huge stream stabilization and invasive plant removal project. It's gonna be gorgeous when, when you see it, you probably don't even know it's there. I'm excited for this project.
I, I'm supposed to be meeting with the core vendors, I'm sure we have done it, et cetera, and look to make sure that they have done everything that they need to do in that particular area. Cuz that's been a problem. I've asked about that little, we used to play there, so now, now I'm concerned about it. But anyway, that's the reason why, you remember, we did not put the, the BMW.
The Wetlands.
Wetlands project there is because that was really bad.
It's really bad.
And so we did not put it there. Russell, you remember, we went out there and looked at it and said, huh? Can't do that. Yeah, that, that really is, is really bad.
I'm excited for this one. And then we touched a little bit on Myers Drive. Just, just so you know, this is gonna be a broken culvert for other utilities, so it'll be not your typical installation, but we've got bids out, published right now. Advertizers looking for end of the month for opening bids for this project.
And now we're to the wastewater fund.
Question, question, one more question.
Question, question, question.
Could we get, I, I would love to see an impact of what we've done on the river restoration, both for Cleveland Park and for Unity Park. Have we done pre and post tests of order quality and stuff like that?
We do. It's, it's difficult to, you know, find the effect of one particular spot on a watershed basis, but yes, we've got, we've got reports and.
I think it'd be really important for us to see, I mean, cuz it's such a great project that we don't talk a lot about. I think it'd be very exciting to hear.
We know, we know the flood control, of course, it just worked beautifully, absolutely pictured perfect.
Anytime you have all the stream bags together, that's polluted the ground as well.
The water looks cleaner. I'll say that.
And the fish have two eyes instead of six.
We'll move on to wastewater. Every year after the operating and capital equipment, which I mentioned for stormwater. Then a portion of the revenue is available for wastewater projects. We have the ability to issue debt to accelerate funds needing for these projects. The total funding amount in FY twenty-three was five million and our planned amount for FY twenty-four is seven million. We have four million planned to come from the debt issuance for that fund. North Pleasantburg Sewer Culvert Project received one point two million. We've spent most of it. I think there might be one additional invoice and then this was complete and we can redistribute this money, hundred and thirty thousand. Woodside Sewer, same thing, not as much money, nine hundred and ninety thousand. And it is complete and we will redistribute that forty-one thousand. The flow metering project received two hundred and forty-six thousand. It is in process with an open purchase order, metering at twelve locations citywide. Our Red Street Sewer is budgeted at two point six million. This money is on a purchase order and construction is set to begin after the first of this week.
Quick question. Those Red Street projects, this one and the one that was on the stormwater, are we getting any contribution from all that development that's coming up there?
Stormwater fee, they'll pay sewer fee.
Yeah, they'll pay sewer fee, they'll pay stormwater fee, but no upfront contributions, I'm aware of. These, yeah, the South Downtown Sewer Project received a hundred and eight thousand and that's on design cost. It is about sixty percent complete and then we do have some grant funds that will hopefully get us some construction money. We have a wastewater system evaluation plan, project. We have fifty thousand in there, it's recurring cost and we evaluate the system, it's like an annual thing. Mayberry Street, a one point seven five million, we all paid or encumbered and it is in process. It's, so if we have any additional money, we would reallocate it back out if we come in and have a residual once the final payments are made. Our McDaniel Avenue Sewer, two point seven million has been received for this project. It is complete and there's a lot of money left on this, but I'm thinking there's one more invoice that's supposed to come in. One more he's asked, that's what I thought. Manhole rehab.
I'm sorry, Karen, on that one, did we have any county sharing the costs on that? Why am I bothering to ask this? But that was largely driven by County Square additional sewer, was it not?
Not entirely, not entirely, no. But it was the opportunity for that McDaniel Bridge rehab to go in there.
When they go to the bridge.
It was a sewer project, we have rich project outside.
I'm, I'm familiar with it. I recall it.
We're typical, it's open again.
We all are.
We all are. Manhole rehab received about six hundred thousand in funding, it's an ongoing project and there's about eighteen mil, eighteen thousand left in that one. Stone Hollow received ninety-four thousand and they're acquiring easements there. We have S H P Legacy Development, it is sewer relocation and that is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. I think we'll pay that once everything's done. And then in this fund, we have an undesignated project. Year to date, or no, over the last five years, we've received in ten point two five million in there. And then we have sent it out to all of the different projects, some of which are already complete, but these are the remaining ones. We have a balance of around four million and then, like I had said, we just kind of reallocate money if we have any savings anywhere, just moving around. And this is where our bond proceeds and our annual sewer fees would come into there. So any money we have left over, after other expenses, they would go with you. We budgeted seven million to go into it in twenty-four.
How do we feel about the West Greenville Sewer infrastructure currently and to absorb the woven? Do we ever take a look at that, you know, just when we add, when we're adding a lot of density in a small?
Right, so any development has, has a sewer model put on it too, where they provide us their demand and their flows. We take a look at it in a really early sense to determine what's gonna be upsized. There's capacity there, but, but it's, it's, it's a challenging part of the city.
Worried about that one.
Yeah, just highlighting a couple here. Red Street is gonna be a, a major project that gets started this summer and if you can also imagine everything else that's happening in this area as well. So all of the underground utilities for sanitary and sewer along Red Street will start this July. And you can see there's three main sources, stormwater, wastewater and resurfacing fronts for that project.
There was a problem with that a couple of years ago and this, this improved it or?
Vastly.
Cuz, I mean.
This is a major bottleneck for both stormwater and wastewater in any.
Are we, how are we communicating that with the neighborhoods around there?
Have we started to do that?
Really, just, just getting to that point.
That's gonna be very, very important for the people.
They're getting coordination meeting with, really trying to work with the other developers around the area and secure some laydown area and coordinate our access and laydown yards. Yeah, public communications is ready to start engaging.
South Downtown, we just received grant funding, three point nine million dollars, a scope grant, which was a big win for implementation for construction for this. So this is South Downtown area, Annie Serene neighborhood and all the potential growth for that area. And we got some real good news recently that it's, it's a reality now. So currently sixty percent isn't bad.
We're gonna flip over to the zoo fund now and.
Great, great report right there.
We have a couple of projects that received funding in FY twenty-three, the South America improvements. We're pending updates to existing exhibits there. Walkway repaving, we have some ADA improvements and resurfacing and then we have about a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand for exhibit improvements. The most important thing, I think, is all the new projects that are going in there. Got about a million dollars related to various items at the zoo. Ant eater, our Asia exhibits, oscillate, we need a new X-ray machine, some other random building improvements. And then IT network replacement for the zoo. And as I said, that totals one million. And then Jeff can speak to a couple of things.
Are they funding the consultant fees for the reading, for the, whatever they're doing?
I know that's gonna be the, it's coming from fund balance in this.
Yes, they're enterprise. What, on that list that you just had, Karen, and you may not be able to answer this, I don't know if Bill's here.
Tara's here.
Tara's here. You know, I just want to make sure we're forward thinking on AZA accreditation when we, you know, face that. So all of those will speak towards that. Okay. Thank you.
So on the giraffe feeding platform, happy to say that it is complete. Wrapped it up last month. I think the only thing left, where it's open to the public, is training the giraffes on using the space.
I don't know water.
The platform is high enough, right? Well, it can't be too high, it can't be too low, I've been told on that one, so.
We all make ourselves available if you need people to help.
It's a very long time.
We're not gonna open probably until about July, I think that's in May.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's. All right, and the zoo Africa Plaza is next to the giraffe and is an AZA item that provides improvement to the lion exhibit. And also introduces a new small animal exhibit space adjacent to lion and giraffe where the tortoise will move to. And then porcupine will be brought in as well.
So now is that fully funded by private donor and city contribution or is that all, what's the breakdown on that? What do we, that one's one that's been on hold forever.
It says additional hundred thousand possibly from the foundation.
Believe this, a foundation. And it's in design right now, not into construction. So we're just tracking and assisting with design ideas and design.
But it's all being handled by the foundation.
Now we'll switch over to the undergrounding fund. We have Unity Park Undergrounding, funded at five point three million. And these projects are complete, currently going through final closeout with Duke Energy, our, the city's partner for these projects. And there are a couple of additional items that will receive funding. Augusta Street, which we had mentioned earlier, and Augusta and Stone Overhead Cleanup. I'll let Clint take you through these.
The Unity Park Undergrounding on Hudson Street, that's been completed. You can see the before and after pictures. It makes a huge difference, as you know, previous projects, but glad to be, glad to be done with that one. There was three phases involved with that one. Finally, finally gotten that one wrapped up here, this first quarter of the year. So one of the, you know, we, we presented an update on commercial undergrounding and our residential undergrounding program back in December, where we increased our subsidy going towards our residential program. And also kind of presented kind of what we saw with the next priority projects for our commercial program. The overhead poles were a major item that came up during our Augusta Street safety meetings. Just a lot of concerns with those poles and their proximity to the road. Since we're under design with our, our streetscape plan for Augusta Street, obviously we would want that utility relocation and undergrounding coordinated very closely with that. So we've got that under design right now as part of the Stand Tech contract. And there's about three blocks of Augusta Street that we're proposing to do the underground.
Nice compact area. It's also a section with a Patera bus cannot go down the street because the, can't navigate the telephone poles.
I believe one of those poles in that picture has been recently hit.
I'll say they get it about twice a year. But we're still talking to Duke about their own responsibilities to get this stuff underground and we're seeking some additional money from the state and other sources.
What's the status of pole duplicity?
Ongoing, redundant poles, yeah, and it's, we've got.
They're still trying.
Our utility coordinator, Nancy Sue, is, she watches it very, very closely and monthly. We, we have quarterly, quarterly meetings with all the utility companies and she watches it very closely.
Is that the whole term?
We call it.
Duplication.
Yeah, redundant poles.
And Clint, just for whoever's taking notes, there's a pole on the corner of Bennett and Stone that's been hit twice now and it's got shards of wood, wood, really dangerous. So if we can get on charter and for eighteen tier, whoever's it is.
Probably a Duke pole.
Duke to get that thing out of there, that would be very much appreciated. It is, it is dangerous now with this.
The other project we heard, kind of at our update in December, was just cleaning up overhead lines where we can. And we've identified several blocks along Stone Avenue as well as Augusta Street where we have opportunities. We're currently working with Duke right now. We've got some preliminary assessments. Probably will tackle these on a block-by-block basis with Duke. And which will allow us just to see progress made sooner rather than just trying to get it all designed at one time.
Clint, does that just tighten them up or remove dup, obsolete lines?
It allows us to consolidate poles and remove poles and underground some of the crossings.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a little bit of undergrounding.
And there are always lines, there are lines up there that aren't even being used or is that just residential? There are, there are lines that go from the street to residential that are sometimes unused. Do you have that also that peers on the corridors?
Probably not so much on the corridors.
We, we include on the redundant side, you know, not to be redundant about the issue, but it's always worth talking about. I know that's a bad word. We have in our franchise agreement, language that speaks to that, seems to be to no avail. Orange Road has redundant poles and have had them now for two years. Augusta Road has redundant poles. We continue to have that conversation. Nancy Sue though has been very successful in getting not so much the big projects, but a lot of the small boutique ones around town like you mentioned, one by one.
To mention Nancy Sue, she's out there on the road in that fluorescent vest looking at poles. You mentioned the notebook, but she's surveying them.
So we're starting to get.
She does a great, she does a great job.
Okay, we're going to look at our neighborhood infrastructure bond and this spreadsheet is going to provide the funding by type of project. So we go see significant money, roads and bridges, thirteen-point-seven million. Traffic management, four million. Sidewalks are eight-point-seven million. Parks and community centers, four-point-nine million. Our public safety campus, thirteen-point-five. That includes both the purchase of the land and some of the, also the improvements. And contingency of two-point-seven for a total of forty-seven-point-five million. I wanted to remind you, we issued debt in June of last year for twenty-eight-point-seven million. And our planned debt issuance for the remaining eighteen-point-eight will be in FY twenty-four. So Jeff.
Public Safety Campus, this project is well underway. We gave you all the tour many months ago and it was filled with furniture like we could start working that day. While the furniture is now gone, building is heavily into demolition, about ninety-nine, ninety-five percent complete demo with the expectation to start full, uh, upfit renovation construction later this month, first of June.
We, we started our discussion today, talked about fire stations, which is a big lift over many years, sort of methodically building new stations, renovating others. But also on the list for years and years has been a new police station and city courts. And, you know, our ship has arrived on this one. This is a big progress initiative. This was off the list. We can get this settled and then we can refocus again on the fire, on the fire side.
We looked at this a little bit earlier, but this is just where we are with our NIB sidewalk projects, well underway with design of all of the projects and getting construction started on the first couple. So we try to, we, we really don't have these streets prioritized, so to speak. So we've tried to just group projects together in a logical location type groupings, try to get those competitive bids that we want with a sizable construction project. So as you can see, we, as costs have gone up, we don't quite have the budget available to do all these projects. We do have some NIB contingency funds that we can work with. Also, we envision a street like Keith Drive, we know we have some right-of-way issues to work out on Keith Drive. We know that project will probably get pushed back a little bit in our schedule as we work through right-of-way. So as we get into the construction and bid more of these projects, we'll have a better feel for the construction pricing and, and what we see as a phasing standpoint approach. But this is kind of where we are with our NIB projects right now.
That's a great list. Some of the streets have been out there for decades and wanting to have sidewalks and it was just bigger than we could handle, but now we can do it. That's a great list.
So resurfacing, resurfacing, I want to highlight a few quick things. We, through the NIB, we were, we had a significant investment in repaving. We're also, we also got the matching funds from GLTTC. So we actually doubled in on money. We were able to spend on resurfacing. We're in the process of working with the biz, we just received for the next phase of what we're putting out. And just another thing to highlight, so, so.
I know where the, right, Hillside was mentioned earlier, but this picture is actually twin light.
Yeah.
So resurfacing is a great program that we've started looking at as far as our Vision Zero goals and our complete streets policy. So when we resurface the road, we're looking at how can we change bike lanes, add bike lanes, protect them. Industrial safety, new ramps, new crosswalks, high visibility crosswalks. We're looking at, at these streets pretty much holistically when we go in and resurfs. See what can be done in conjunction with these projects.
Yeah, and I'll just add on this, this is an interesting project because not only did they do the bike lane, but also the, what are they called, the ball, the ballers?
Yes.
Right? But also there was a problem here with, with parents that were parking all along here and you had some near misses of children. One child got hit. A lot of near misses because you had parked cars and kids were darting in between cars. So this is a great opportunity with repaving to not only do this, but also change kind of a, a dangerous situation. So really some, some good things come out of this.
Right, so we started doing this, every road this game resurfs with that holistic approach, high land, grid, striding, crosswalks, pedestrian safety, bike safety, as well as maybe slow down speeds, narrow the lanes up where we can. And DOT's been really good to work with on the DOT roads we've been having as well. So they've kind of let us implement some of these plans on their roads as well. So it's, it's been great. It's really good to get us towards the Vision Zero goals, pedestrian safety goals.
Awesome.
Can I ask a quick question on sidewalks again, since he just sat down? Back to that overhead, more projects cost than we have funded, the eight-point-seven, so I'm back to that million. Do we have any federal grant applications still outstanding that we have not heard back from? That we were aggressively, presumably aggressively pursuing last year as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law?
I would have to get back to you on that. I don't think so. I think we have been outstanding, but the next round of everything is coming up.
I have to do some advocacy.
Brings me to a quick question. Do we qualify for any of the RIA money, Rural and District Authority money that was just, is being released? I believe we qualify.
Yes.
That would skip.
That's the grant we got.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Previous end of them.
Awesome.
Gower Park Court Renovation is a project that's out for bid right now and it is, its goal is to take the courts that are existing, the tennis, basketball courts, renovate those to provide three new tennis, ten new pickleball, two basketball courts, as well as repave the park. And we should get those bids back by the end of the month, May twenty-four. Grant funding, yes, forgot. It is getting L D D C F grant money in the tune of five-hundred thousand dollars. Cleveland Park Court Renovation, same similar scope project. It will renovate the tennis courts, basketball courts and add in a couple of pickleball courts. And we're going to release this one after Gower's done, just to, A, not flood the market with a bunch of court projects, as well as not shut down all the courts at the same time.
That's the, AKA Ken Gibson tennis complex.
The pickleball segregation project.
You're an inspiration, Ken.
And then last but not least, certainly not least, Nickel Town Community Center renovation project is also out for proposals. We getting those.
That picture down says it all.
Yeah.
It's that interior, it's a renovation project and also will do some site improvements. We, we received a lot of positive feedback on our pre-bid meeting. We had seven contractors and four architects come to the meeting, which is pretty good in this market right now. So we're expecting good things tomorrow.
Will it be on the same footprint that you're aware of?
Yeah, same, same. Total, renovation on the inside. And that, that design will be guided by a feasibility study from.
Well, what's the date on that again?
I'm sorry?
Tomorrow.
I suppose do tomorrow.
Okay. Who's sessioning down there?
Thursday.
Thursday.
The budget will continue past signing.
Make a quick session. If someone made a request for finals, when will they find out?
The House is releasing their version of the budget on Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
So Tuesday or Wednesday. I'll send you the spreadsheet.
They have three days left, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But we may, we may hopefully, fingers crossed.
I'll send you, I'll send you the spreadsheet when it comes down.
We may be getting some additional funds.
Cool.
Okay, before we wrap up, y'all have endured much this afternoon. I want to remind the council district representatives, there are still funds available in your dividend balances, okay? The dividends that were moved to capital projects funds at the end of FY twenty-two, they need to be committed to a project by June thirty of this year. So if you have funds that you were given at the end of twenty-two, you need to commit them.
So I got a month?
Yes, sir, by June thirty, month and a half. You don't have to spend them, you have to commit them to a certain project.
Okay.
Okay? Megan has set up a board.
Okay.
At this point, you contact her. That one will be a very specific way that we can officially.
Can't even get my, can't even get my program this.
Good work. Much work.
Next steps. May the twenty-second, we will have our public hearing.
You had large.
And June the twelfth will be second reading and adoption.
Okay.
Yes, questions?
Transit.
Transit.
We're going to have a discussion on transit? Maybe that later on in the week, I would like to have that.
We're going to talk to, give you your talking points.
Karen, you did a great job.
I do have.
This is not exactly a trained, you know, well-organized group, but we, thank you honey, you did a marvelous job. Some of us get hostile at certain times.
I was afraid to listen to it.
You don't want to say that. You do not want to say that. He said this was a joke.
Taking a break. Going straight in. Well, there's more to that even outside the box. If that's how you want to be then.
Yeah.
Fifteen main twenty-two.
Yeah, that's.
So, yeah, so she let me get. Yeah. So, you know, because we, we have a number of people in the community. So that's why she, you know, as far as she puts it.
They haven't had.
In the room, they're watching.
So. I'm looking for it.
Have you committed, on that project? You did, have you committed yours?
You actually got very.
My shame.
I got some projects for you. Oh, yes. That project, the main. Thank you. Thank you.
I've got to do it, I know.
Thanks, Clint. Good job.
Thank you.